Welcome to the September edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. With schools across the state back in session, don't forget to share the excitement of students, staff, and the entire public school community with your local legislators. Invite your legislators to celebrate the return to school with a day touring your school district. MSBA President Jonathan Russell says that activities such as legislator visits are just part of year-round advocacy efforts.
Well, it's important because you don't want to, the first time that you ask them about an issue, to be at the Capitol when they're getting ready to vote on something. You want to have developed a relationship with them prior to that. So doing this during their time off, when they're not in session, and they're back in their districts, is a perfect opportunity to start to develop that relationship.
When the legislature returns in January, Missouri is guaranteed to have a new governor, new leadership in both the House and Senate, and at least 58 new House members and 10 senators, almost a third of the legislature. MSBA Senior Director of Governmental Relations, Branch Shields, says that there are ways that school board members can help these new legislators as they take office.
Legislators will look for trusted sources of information and advice on a variety of topics, and you are perfectly positioned to be a trusted voice on public education issues for your community. But the building of these relationships with legislators doesn't begin in January, it begins now. One of the best ways to engage current and future legislators is to invite them into your schools. Help show them the fantastic work your students and teachers are doing.
And with the start of the next legislative session just around the corner, make sure you don't miss the upcoming Fall Delegate Assembly. This delegate assembly is the chance to have your voice heard on issues surrounding public education as we head toward the next legislative session. The Fall Delegate Assembly will be held during the Friday of Annual Conference. And if you haven't registered for the conference yet, it's not too late. The 2024 MSBA Annual Conference, in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials, will be held October 17th through the 19th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, plus the Education Expo and another great lineup of general session speakers. And once again, the My Favorite Book Drive will be back at the annual conference as well. Donate your favorite pre-K through 3rd grade book and be entered into a drawing to win 500 books from Scholastic. Increase your district's chance with your whole board's participation. At least six districts will win. Each winner will receive at least one curated Scholastic collection of books along with donated books. Winners will be announced at the Second General Session on Saturday. One of the primary areas of emphasis for Jonathan Russell during his year as president is literacy, and he says that the My Favorite Book Drive is a great way to help students.
I just want to extend a challenge to all board members to make sure that you bring some books to donate to our book drive at conference. For every book that you donate, you get your name put in a drawing to win some books for your school district. So I won last year, and that was amazing. I brought three books last year and got three chances to win. Literacy is the key to all education. You know, once you gain a really good, strong reading skills or a passion for reading, that leads, that opens so many other doors in every other subject.
That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in October for the next MSBA Board Report.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda item that was presented.
Martha?
I have a motion and a second. I believe I have one abstention. Everyone else, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Cut it.
Next on the agenda is Public Participation. Board members and administrators, God bless America, I'm sorry. The time has come. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. Per policy, BDDH-1 Public Participation at Board Meetings, the following rules apply to the public comment portion of the meeting. No public comment period, the public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during the period. Each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Discussion will be limited to items from the posted agenda. All speakers must provide their name and address prior to speaking. If there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the board will encourage participants to submit their questions in writing or utilize the process for putting an item on the agenda. I have a couple of requests for public comment. Krista Woke, Carrie Staffen, they're on the same topic. Did you want to speak separately, or?
We can come up together.
Okay. Mr. Bowser will have the clock.
Do we get 10? Do I need to set that? No. Sorry. Okay, so I am the teacher that encouraged the kids to fight for what they wanted. They came to me, they said that they were concerned about the graduation date, and I told them that they absolutely should do their research and then come and present to the board. Then they found out what some of the repercussions were, I found out what some of the repercussions were, and I don't regret telling them to come to talk to you because I think they should. However, after talking to them, I told them I would be here to talk to you, to ask you to please reconsider your decision. They also are okay with me being here asking you to reconsider your decision. I feel like we've set a precedent that I don't, I'm not comfortable with, and I'm also very scared of what could come down the pike later because of a decision like this. I absolutely 100% respect and admire every single one of you. I thank you for what you do for us. I just ask that you please reconsider the decision that you made because that affects a small number compared to how many it could affect, because we don't know what our state's going to do, and so I just ask that you consider that.
Okay, and just to add to what she said, I too am here for the same issue, the graduation date discussion that was had last board meeting. My concern, because I know from conversations with everybody, is that the repercussions have been limited greatly. We know a lot more about the issue than we had before. I'm not necessarily asking you to reconsider. I'm coming to you more out of concern as a teacher and educator. It's a really tough time to be in our shoes for administration, for school personnel anyway, and I know you guys feel all of our pain. I know you see posts that are negative about the school district, and you know that those things are important to us and that we all really care about the kids. My concern is that the kids' emotions maybe outweighed some of the administrators' concerns and the material that they presented to you, and it's a very scary time to put more weight on people based on their opinion versus those who have true knowledge and have dug into those issues. I have nothing but respect for our administrators. I know that Dr. Boyd spends an immense amount of time trying to do everything he can for our kids in our high school, and I know that this was his idea, and for him to come forth and say, "Yeah, we really probably need to change that," that was impactful for me. So I just want to make sure going forth that we are still heard and that our voice still carries weight with you guys, and I know it does. I know you guys care, and it's, it's a tough job that you have. I really do respect that. But that was very concerning for me, enough so that I really felt like I needed to come here and just ask that you please take those considerations and those arguments and weigh them with what they should, with the weight that they should be given. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Next on the agenda is the Report of the Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome again. The first thing on the superintendent's report is the first day in school, first day of school enrollment numbers. Up on the screen, you will see the pre-K and early childhood special education numbers for Bloomsdale and St. Genevieve Elementary. Bloomsdale pre-K is 22, and St. Genevieve Elementary is 21, for a total of 43. And early childhood special education for St. Genevieve Elementary is 20, for a total of 63. We're down eight from last year on the first day of school, but don't fret. They're continually identifying students, and students are continually joining us, so we anticipate that number to be up soon. For kindergarten through 5th grade for both Bloomsdale Elementary and St. Genevieve Elementary, you can see the totals there. I'm not going to read them all off to you. But for Bloomsdale Elementary, we have a total of 317 students, and St. Genevieve Elementary, we have a total of 574 students. The total for the district is 869 students, which is up 19 students from last year, so that's very nice to see. Depending on where you are, because space is limited. I can feel Nanya looking at me. First day of school enrollment for 6th through 8th grade, 143 students in 6th, 127 in 7th, 143 in 8th, for a total of 413. That's up 10. And then St. Genevieve High School, a total of 568. That's up 29. So really positive numbers compared to last year. We like to go back. This is not an indication of where we're going to end up. It's the first day of school, we have transfers going out, we have transfers coming in, but we, I love looking at data, and it's, it's a good way to start the year. Okay, where were we last year? Where are we this year on the first day of school? We'll know more September 30th is our first count date that we have to count students for the state of Missouri, and then we have another count date in January. And we have that recorded as well. We can go back to last year and compare it to where we are this year. Hopefully, this trend will continue, and enrollment will continue to be up in the near years. Any questions about it?
It's good to see.
Next on the superintendent's report is the Technology Report, and I believe Ms. Nancy Toomes is here to hear that. If you click on that.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Nancy.
Should be on the title or that.
There you go. We did a lot of stuff this summer.
Right side.
So we did rotate out some computers. We have a rotation pretty much every year, and we did rotate, rotate out three sets of class sets of computers for the students, and we bought the newest Lenovo Gen 4 that they have. It's a really nice computer. It's actually got a bigger screen. Kids really seem to like them, so we rotated down what they had into the middle school, we're pushing those down into the elementary. And our next rotation next year will be to get K through 3 replaced, so that's coming next summer. And then we have all of our Windows machines upgraded to Windows 11. Windows 10 is falling off, so we are all the way up to Windows 11. We did replace all the backbone this summer. Again, you can only get about three years out of that. We had to go four years because of supply problems last year, so we were able to actually replace all of our Wi-Fi and backbone. And of course, we're always adding new video cameras. That happens all the time. So we've added new video cameras, we upgraded our internet filter, we refined and implemented more of the Crisis Go app. We have added additional radios. Our hope is to get all of our teachers covered with radios over the next couple of years. And we upgraded our endpoint detection system. That is a 24/7 system that constantly monitors our network. And we also have enforced a multi-factor authentication. Our teachers love that. You know, that's the way it goes, right? And our phishing systems have been implemented. We are also sponsoring the Enhancement Grant this year. We replaced the whole business lab, both labs, with brand-new computers. They were highly needed down there. That was one of our last phases of replacement. Our fax class is getting a whole new workstation replaced. In their little kitchen areas, they have touchscreens above all the workstations, and they're getting some really cool printers for food printing down there. So it'd be kind of fun to go down there and check that out when we get those in. We are also supporting the computer programming class with Ms. Haley Fowler with any equipment that she needs and any software upgrades. We're also going to help Ms. Kane get some robotics equipment and help with the robotics club devices. And we did run an online graduate class this summer. I'm going to repeat that here, probably in the second eight weeks here in the fall, and it is three hours credit through MOBAP for our teachers with graduate credit. And we are revising the Teacher Hub with new resources, and we won't be revisiting the Technology Committee probably in the second semester. And that's all really, it doesn't look like a whole lot, but we have been very busy this whole lot. Does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Toomes, how many Windows PCs do you have running?
Windows? Oh, we're up to probably about 583.
Really?
Yeah, we've got a lot.
Even beyond Chromebooks?
Yes.
Wow. Where do most of those reside at?
We've got, well, like, all of the staff have Windows.
That's true.
So you're talking, you know, there's quite a few there. Maintenance has, you know, several. All of our business labs, we've got AutoCAD lab, we've got a English lab, we've just got labs floating around that you just, we don't even think of.
Yeah.
We've got all of our TVs in the halls are run by Windows machines, so it's, it's pretty much everywhere still.
And is Ms. Fowler teaching on Windows?
She, yes. Well, yeah, she's got a couple, but she's got Chromebook, too. They, they start with a Chromebook.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. Pretty awesome. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, next we have Principal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to kind of start the school year off with like our new student breakfast. We welcomed all of those students new to St. Genevieve Elementary this year. Mr. Kingery and I, and Mrs. Kingery, and Mrs. Griminger met with all of them and got to know the students and where they were coming from. Just recently, about two weeks ago, we had our Little Gems Clinic. There were over, I believe, 108, 10 little girls out there, and fortunately, they got finished before the downpour, so that was great. We also worked with Dr. Boyd. He opened up the high school to us so that we were able to allow our grandparents and VIPs to come through the commons area, and they were able to park up there, and we were still able to host our grandparents' VIP Day. We had to modify it a little bit. We didn't take the building tours, we didn't traipse all over campus, but they were able to sit and meet with their special people, and it was, I think, very well-received and very, people appreciated the fact that we made that effort to make that happen. So thanks, Dr. Boyd. Okay, so I put entrepreneurship collaboration here, but I do believe Ms. Knitzler wrote up for me a little blurb to read. "Her art power group is collaborating with the Dragon Print Shop, led by Cantlet Crupp at the high school, to provide students with hands-on experience in design and entrepreneurship. During the first power group session, the students visited Mrs. Crupp's classroom to observe the printing machines and the process of making the prints. Now, students will create their own designs using Canva or hand-drawn artwork, which will then be printed on various items such as mousepads, shirts, tumblers, hats, and stickers. To support their fundraising efforts, students will also design and sell custom buttons for $1 before school each morning. Through this project, students will develop the skills in graphic design, creativity, business management, marketing, and entrepreneurship, fostering both their artistic and professional growth." So basically, what Ms. Knitzler described to me is that the students in the elementary are creating, and Ms. Crupp's class is doing the printing. So they're doing that collaboration, so I thought that was a pretty cool way to make our power group work. On the right there, we have One School, One Book. Mrs. Beckett is our new SGE librarian, and she's pictured there with our dino robot that made its way around the building, greeting all of the kids and kind of getting them excited about the book. Each Friday, Mrs. Beckett is doing some trivia questions with the students, and she's giving away little prizes, and they're, it's just neat that the whole school is doing the book at the same time, but they've also reached out, and she's doing a partnership with Ms. Barry at, oh, she's Ms. Tisher now. She's Ms. Tisher now, at Bloomsdale Elementary. So at St. Genevieve Elementary, we are going to go to the Perry Park Center and watch the movie. The school's picking up, well, our fundraising efforts are picking up the tab so that all students can attend, and we thought that would be a great culminating activity for the book. Okay, so normally, we do pictures, normally, we do a video, but we had 55 positive office referrals since the beginning of school, so please bear with me. Adeline Weathers, Adelaide Apps, Annabella Gek, Aria Hayne, Asa Milan, Avery Wybrecht, Bentley Reese, Brooke Greither, Carter Brown had two, Gloria Gretzsmacher, Gus Cudding, Haley Sumner, Hannah Tucker, Henry Gek, Hope Clayton, Isaiah Baker, Jagger LaPlante, Jackson DeBeau, Joe Lynn Cudding, Keegan Apt, Keaton James, Kennedy Heberly, Kenley Deck, Langston Roy, Boston McGee, Leighton Nagger had two, Leo Hortman, Mackenzie Hook, Maddie Williams, Max Jokers, Mia Jokers, Mason McDaniel, Noah Haven, Nolan Romer, Nora Donovan had two, Olivia Leckie had two, Piston Davis, Quinn Fowler, Rilia Wood, Rhett Hogan Miller, Ryder Adams, Ryland Roth, Sadie McCurley, Teddy Brosh, Troy Wrinkle, Vanessa Hudson, Waylon Kreitler, Wyatt Hernandez, Wyatt Kellum, Wyatt Pickard, and Xander Welsh. And so that's just a testament to all the great things that the kids at St. Genevieve Elementary are doing, so that was pretty awesome. And then finally, we have our featured teacher and superstaff for September. Our featured teacher was Ms. Lindsay Rector from 4th grade. Some of the nominations said, "Mrs. Rector is an amazing role model for all teachers. She builds relationships and forms strong connections with all of her students. She even attends their extracurricular activities. She has a calm demeanor while keeping her students and countable engaged, and she's an integral part of our SGE team." And then our superstaff was Ms. Patty Nagger, our daytime custodian. It said, "Ms. Patty is the hardest-working person in our building. She thinks of everyone and makes sure we have what we need. She loves the kids and loves showing them how to help themselves and each other. Ms. Patty is so positive and keeps our school so clean. She's quick to respond and does a great job." So thanks for taking care of us in SGE. So that's it for St. Genevieve Elementary.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so up in the top left, we have the Labor's Local 830 present school supplies to our building, and we do not have them pictured, but the Lebanon Baptist Church also presented us with book bags and supplies for the students. Then the picture below that, the American Revolution Representative, Deborah Dollar, presented our 4th grade students with some Constitution Day resources for the classroom. And up in the right-hand side, you'll see our outdoor classroom is getting power-washed by Christie Bynton. She took a lot of time to get the thing power-washed. Our wonderful PTO down at the bottom there is taking it upon them, has taken it upon themselves to get supplies organized and sent out, and Wholesome is donating the whole classroom for us. They're going to supply all the furniture, and they are going to restructure the outdoor classroom because there are parts of it that is falling apart, so. And then you'll see the mural painted on the wall that was done by Kenzie Wolk, and it really just adds an added effect to the outdoor classroom. We're anxious for that to be finished. So Wholesome is going to do that one weekend. They have a group working together that's going to get that finished for us, for our kiddos to enjoy. And the kindergarten students had their bus safety tour. There are several kiddos that, this is their first time ever riding a bus, so Mrs. Fritsch took them out, and each class had to do bus safety talk. Whether they ride the bus or not, they will probably be on it for a field trip at some point, so that's part of what she did with them this, the beginning of the school year. And then our wonderful nurse, Lori Gek, hosted a CPR event where she just did techniques for parents after our PTO meeting. They did not become certified, obviously, but she did show them other techniques that they can use. And then, like Mrs. Gek said, we have the One School, One Book, the Wild Robot, and he's made his way around our building as well. We celebrated Dot Day on September 15th. It's just a new national holiday, I guess, maybe seven years, I think it said, or I read. Then you're supposed to just encourage students to make their mark, be positive with words of affirmation and things like that. So the kids did activities surrounding that all day. And we have our Bloomsdale Boost. Ms. Tyne Hook has her students and Emma Spring Camper. One of their groups has been taking orders and preparing the drinks for us and delivering them, which it's been a wonderful added, I guess, perk to being in the building. And our positive office referrals, we did not have near as many. Anova Squires, Aubrey Hook, Theo Schleter, Ronald Sebel, Cashden Fernal, Liam Hughes, Lake Noble, Dusty Wagner, Jaylee Bourbon, Rosalie Wortenby, and Chloe Schwent. And our Faculty and Staff of the Month, Mrs. Bynton. She, the things that was written about her, she has incredible dedication. She works hard making our school a better place, shows commitment to our building, willingness to lend a helping hand, and spent countless hours preparing our building for the school year. She's a wonderful friend to us all, and it's kind of ironic that both custodians in the elementary but made the Staff of the Month because they worked endlessly to prepare the rooms. And she's incredibly helpful in getting our classrooms ready, moved out classroom desks and replaced them with tables without hesitation, and volunteered to adjust the table heights for her students. So those were our Faculty and Staff of the Month. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As always, thank you for the opportunity. You're going to find out as we go through the slides that I had a hard time making cuts, which is, which is a good problem to have. We, we have so many things that we want to share with you, so many things to brag about. I got to tell you, when I, when I talk about how the school year started this year, I tell everybody that by the time we came back in August, I felt more ready to start the school year than I think I ever have before, and I credit that to the amazing team that I have. And here's a great example of that. This photo was taken at 6th grade orientation, and I wanted to share it with you, not only so you could see our 6th graders, but also so you could see that great mural, too. This is in the new gym up here. And the 6th grade orientation, we handled a little bit differently this year because normally that falls on the calendar before our teachers have even reported back. This year, however, just because of the way things fell, we opted to have this on Teacher Work Day, and so we asked Mrs. Meyer, whose program it is, to do a little redesign for us so that we could balance taking advantage of the fact that we had our teachers on hand so that we could have their experience and their know-how and their kindness for the kids, but also balance their work time in the classroom, too, so that we weren't taking too much of that away from them, too. And it went great, and I credit the teachers for that, I credit Mrs. Meyer's design for that, and this is, this is a shot from that day. At the top on the left, you can see our band students who just this past weekend traveled to the St. Louis Symphony Orchestra perform live, as, as we've done before. You guys have, have been with me when I've presented these before, and this time, they saw the motion picture ET while the symphony orchestra played the score for that live. There on the right in the red shirts, those are some of our band students. That's Henry, Wyatt, and Sophia, and they were able to attend, for the first time ever, Mineral Area College's Big Band Camp with a focus on jazz music. You know, we send students off to those camps just about every year, but this year, the focus was on jazz music, and they were able to attend tuition-free, thanks to some local sponsorships from HSB, from Keith's Autobody, and from the St. Genevieve Women's Club. So we thank them for that support and for helping our students get to experience those opportunities. There at the bottom left, there's Grace. She, she entered her, her lamb in, as a 4H entry, by the way, in the Simo District Fair and won first in her class, and that's really exciting. And I admit, 4H isn't a St. Genevieve school program, but I don't see any reason why we can't celebrate. I don't see any reason why we can't celebrate her for that anyway. And I do want to mention that Mrs. Fritchie Dunsey did escort Grace and kind of adopted her with her Ag kids, and she's giving her lots of opportunities that some of our middle schoolers don't get because of her involvement in 4H. So we're really proud of her for that, and we thank Mrs. Fritchie Dunsey for her involvement. The two photos that you see at the bottom, I realize that, first of all, because of the size, and secondly, because of the angle, it's a little difficult to see what's going on there. But this is from Mrs. Joker's English class, and Mrs. Mark did a similar activity at the same time. And these students are putting together puzzles while blindfolded, and a partner is giving them the directions on which pieces fit where. And it was such a fun activity, and it was about partnership and collaboration and clear and concise communication, and maybe a little bit of trust, and some interpersonal skills. And so that's a lot of fun. They do that one every year, and I don't know if I've ever shared that with you before, but that's something really cool that they started the year off with. Continuing on with some things that we have from the classroom, at the top left, you've seen some photos before of our math teachers building thinking classrooms, and the idea is there that kids are collaborating. They're up on their feet. They're moving around the room. They're tackling different challenges instead of just the sit-and-get or sitting and doing workbook sheets. They're up and moving and active and getting their brains and their bodies engaged at the same time. At the top right, that's Mr. Roth with his STEM class, and they will occasionally go out and take a look at the construction that's taking place in front of the building and have discussions about, why is this done this way? What is the order of construction? Why do we do this first? Why is this designed this way? So he's helping them understand the process. You know, we had our own construction project last year, and it was beautiful because we started at the beginning of the year, we ended at the end of the year. But this one is so much more visible and visual, and it's just right out there. And so Mr. Roth's really taking advantage of that and helping those kids understand the process. Two photos at the bottom left are introduction to culinary arts students, baked cookies using crumble cookie copycat recipes. That was a very nice day, I might add, especially if you were one of the lucky ones who got to taste test those. And they not only did the cookies and the taste testing, but they also did little photo shoots of their products, and it was wonderful. They did an absolutely amazing job. And then at the bottom right, this is a project you might have heard us talking about on Facebook. I came to Mrs. Huffman and to Dr. Taylor with an idea right about the time we came back to school, and I just wanted our kids to put their screens away at lunch. We don't allow them to use their phones anyway, but a lot of kids would get on their computers, and they would play games or go on the internet or find something to read. And while that's not necessarily a bad thing, I just felt like lunchtime was a good opportunity to promote some pro-social skills. And so I had this idea, and I brought it up with Mrs. Huffman, and she said, funny you should say that, because I've had an idea, too. Her idea was to invest some of our student activities monies in games, card games. These are the little squirt water games with the rings, and we have board games, card games, all kinds of things like that. It lives in an old retired computer cart that we wheel out about halfway through lunch. The kids get their games, they have a seat. Uno, by the way, is by far number one. We have some pretty competitive Uno players, but they're engaging with each other instead of engaging with a screen or hiding behind the screen. And we're so proud of what they've done with that. I thank Mrs. Huffman for her huge contribution to my tiny idea, and it's working, guys. Our kids are visiting with each other instead of hiding behind that screen, and we're really proud of them for that. We had a pretty good list of positive office referrals. As you know, we call those our Dragons on Fire, including Myla Meyer, Alex Brantner, Haley Schweiss, Kaylee Brissette, Charlie Omen, Audrey Harrell, Lillian Doty, Avery Bailey, Lillian Roth, Cole Stolzer, Bentley Huddleston, Jesse Shilly, Kendall Whitner, Aslan Latrell, Haven Leclerc, JD Loudenback, Aubrey Worley, Leila Schmidt, and Harley Courtway. We're very proud of those guys for their contributions to the climate and culture at St. Genevieve Middle School. And finally, we had our first Spotlight Award winner for this year, and that is Ms. Kendall Dobbs. Kendall is starting her third year with us in science, and I put her, the exact language from her nominations there, but let me just tell you, she does an amazing job with our kids. She gives and gives of herself, of her personality, of her knowledge of science, not just in the classroom, but also in that science club, also in dragon groups, also in her interactions in the hallways, and our teachers have recognized that. And that's why she got such a positive nomination this year. She's doing an amazing job, and we congratulate her on being our first Spotlight Award winner. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was just a preview of some dates.
Are you beginning?
Yeah.
While they're doing something, I'd like to remind you all that MSBA is always asking for any good news stories. Get those out to them, because that gets put all over the difference school district. So if you've got something good to say, let's get it out there. Let's be, show them what's in there.
Thank you. All right, good news. You don't have to listen to me very long, but you do get to listen to me tonight. So first of all, it's great to see all of you guys. Thank you, guys, for what you guys do for our kids. I just really appreciate that. I know you won't hear from me a whole lot throughout the year because I'll have kids here doing it. So, without further ado, I do have Ella Schweiss and Destiny Fight here with me tonight, and they are presenting you the board with your yearbooks for 2024. So I know you guys were super excited. Mrs. Reeseinger was asking me about it outside, so they are here. They're going to deliver those to you. But before they do that, I would like to announce that the 2024 book that you guys are about to get, which is titled The Bright Side, was inducted into the Walsworth Gallery of Excellence. So our yearbook staff received a framed award from Walsworth yearbook rep last, yeah, last week on Monday during her visit. And just so you know, just for a little point of reference, the rep can only nominate six of the 40 different yearbooks that she sponsors throughout the state, and then approximately 10 to 15% of those yearbooks receive the actual award and the distinction. And this is actually the second year in a row that we have received that award. So SGHS kids are doing amazing things. Mrs. Harlow and the yearbook staff is really devoted. Mrs. Harlow was able to do it in her first year and now followed up in her second year. As you guys dig in and take a look at that, they had a very, very unique perspective and direction that they went with The Bright Side. So we are really, really excited for you guys to get those and be able to enjoy those. And with that said, I'm turning it over to Charlie now, so you can listen to Charlie after you guys get your yearbooks. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now to get into the real presentation, the real meat of it. First of all, I've got some back-to-school pictures put up here. We've got Abby Dobbs and Kyle Bly up there on the far left, Abby Boyer and Caleb Fowler, and we've got Bree Apt, Alyssa Cook, Riley Deck, and Abby Dobbs down here on the bottom. For our Elke Student of the Month, we have Ava Greer. Our Rotary Student of the Month was Lexi Warren. And then our Positive Office Referrals were Brooklyn Johnson, Olivia Nephew, Isla Wolk, Olivia Beckerman, Kennedy Bound, Anna Fisher had two, Cody Gross, Elijah Whitworth, Gabriella Tunnel, Alexis St. Clair, Josephine Guilford, Evan Winters, Micah Sharer, Joshua St. Clair, Isabella Bartel, Elijah Bennett, Leah Dawkins, Lily Saup, Shane Sonderman, Alexander Bosler, Kell Clements, and Justin Harris. And we've got some news for you as well. We've got FFA Field Trips. That one down there on the bottom left is the Livestock Judging Competition at Filkerwood Arena, and then to the right of that is from the Farm Bureau Leadership Day in Jefferson City. Up here is a picture of, there's a deco band that came in from Louisiana. So all the band classes, the French classes and the history classes got to go down and see that, and I was a part of that as well. I got to go see that. And it's kind of like a mix of jazz music and like soul music. It's really interesting. It's called the Arrow Jazz Band, and they were here with the St. Gen National Historic Park. And then down there at the bottom is our new sports stream website that's linked on the school website as well. You can go there and see the blog, which has different, like, interviews with different students, and then also the podcast that they do as well. And you can also get to the link to stream all the home volleyball games and football games and basketball games, stuff like that. And then pictured up there on the top left is Homecoming Court. Our freshman attendant is Chloe Ellis escorted by Brandon Deck. Sophomore attendant is Lana Gag escorted by Mason Trolinger. The junior attendant is Kyra Kreitler escorted by Alex Bosler. And then the King Candidates are Isaiah Bosler, Owen Bowman, Johnny Bird, Shay Coleman, Seth Fisher, Caleb McBride, and Jacob Schweiger. Something interesting that we're doing this year, it's not all football players. We open that up to anybody in any of the fall activities, just so we can get more people recognized in that. The Queen Candidates are Carly Bosler, Abby Boyer, Kell Clements, Ava, excuse me, Ava Greer, Brooklyn Johnson, and Olivia Klump. And then down right below that is a picture from Running of the Halls, kind of revamped that this year, going with spirit points, class spirit points. Currently in the lead is the juniors with four points, seniors with three points, sophomores with two points, and the freshmen with one point. Picture there's Mr. Kicker doing his iconic now STEG running of the halls, and then me and Mr. Tisher went down there as well. And then over here with the Skylight mural that graduate now, Hope Schmelzley, did, and then it was touched up by one of the juniors, and then Jolie Parker as well, and that's currently hanging up in one of the skylights in the high school commons. That's really cool. Whenever you walk by, you see all the ones from like the early 2000s and then from the 90s, and then you see 2024 up there as well, so that's cool to see. Some sports news for you guys. Over there on the left is a football picture. I'll start there. Currently, we're 3-1 playing Central on Friday at Central. Cross-country up there in the top is, they're going to be somewhere this weekend, but last weekend, they're at Bismarck. And Finn McLard plays sixth for the boys this past weekend at Bismarck, which is really cool to see. Freshman Finn McLard. Down there at the bottom, girls' golf broke the school record yesterday. They broke the school record in the rain at Merrimack Lakes. That was just said a couple of years ago. That's really cool to see. I think they beat it by seven strokes. And then over here is volleyball. They beat the Soto last night in five in very dramatic fashion by losing the first two sets and then winning three sets. Want to make sure everybody got their money's worth at that one. And then our Teacher of the Month this month is Mrs. Crump. A student wrote, "She should be Teacher of the Month because she always goes above and beyond for her kids. In matter of situation, she is always right by your side, ready to help you overcome the problem, even if she knows absolutely nothing about it. I feel as if she doesn't get enough recognition at all for the amount of things she does for the school. She is running major projects for the school out of her classroom. She sets aside time to work with each and every one of us individually to make sure we understand what we are doing, and she does this in every class. I have had her for all four years I've been in high school, and not once have I seen her sit by and let a student struggle. She has always found a way to make you understand something if you didn't understand it the first time she taught it. She always makes sure you understand something if you're struggling, even if she has to spend a whole class period helping you. Mrs. Crump, thank you for your consistent service to the students at SGHS." That's all I got. That's it.
Thank you.
Glad those are back.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then you will find in your board packet some safety reports. And that's it for the superintendent.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have unfinished business, and the first item is the Instructional Program Presentation, Middle School Business.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bryson Barnes, second year here at St. Genevieve School District, middle school business teacher. Two courses today. I'll kind of be giving you a unit overview of keyboarding applications, which is semester class and primarily 6th, 7th graders. Sometimes we'll get some 8th graders that maybe transferred in late, didn't get it in their 6th and 7th grade years. And then business communication will be the second course, which is primarily 8th grade students, so we usually take that. We'll start, though, with keyboarding applications, and I like these two pictures because it's kind of how we split the class right in half. First half of the class, really focused on the typing and keyboarding aspect, and then we transition to then using the Google App Workspace. So Google Docs, Google Sheets, Google Slides, Gmail, Google Drive, kind of all that stuff for the back half of the class. So, okay. So, kind of like I just said, right, the two main focuses, learning the fundamentals of the typing skill and technique associated with the touch typing method. Do a lot of various activities, some individual practice, some group activities, but really trying to get the remembrance of where our keys are located, just getting more consistent with accuracy. You have to build accuracy to be fast, so we kind of emphasize that. And then we can transition to the Google Apps that I said just a little bit ago, that whole Google Workspace. The unit overview, I kind of put the weeks next to as well, so you kind of get a timeframe. Unit 1 is keyboarding, main emphasis. We kind of transition to the end about how computers work, parts of computers. We talk about internet safety, how to navigate the online space safely, especially in today's world. And then we end with kind of technology expectations in the workplace, what students should expect, you know, for them when they get access to technology for their jobs. Transition to Google Drive, very quick unit. We then touch on Gmail, proper Gmail format. Then we end with Google Docs, Google Sheets, and Google Slides to kind of lead into the final exam at the end of the course. So to start with the Unit 1, with the typing aspect, I kind of want to show you what it looks like from the student's perspective on some things. We use a resource here, typing.com. I've used it every year that I've been teaching business. I think it's super important with the typing aspect, and I tell the students this, is that you're all going to be on an individual level with typing, right? Some are faster, some are slower. This allows us to kind of reach them on their respective level, and it's kind of a unique opportunity where they can track their own progress, their own words per minute, their accuracy as they slowly improve. And if you go to the next slide for me, I'll kind of show you an example of that. So one of the big things that we do are typing tests, and we do it periodically throughout this typing part of Unit 1. And it's usually going to be one, three, or five minutes. We mix it up. You can see a kind of example of a chart of kind of tracking that words-per-minute progress as it changes and fluctuates throughout the unit. And here's kind of example of one of those typing tests look like. I like it because students are able to kind of track and see as they type. A cool benefit of this program as well, it shows at the bottom half of the screen what finger should be on which keys, just for kind of that repetitive practice and to kind of remember it as they go through. So that's kind of one of the main resources we use for typing.com amongst other activities. Here is the students in action using the old keyboard covers to get the practice with the home row keys, top row and bottom row. That's kind of how we section it off. We kind of go week by week. We start the home row. We focus on home row words. We transition to the top, bottom. We do some then right-hand practice, left-hand practice, then we kind of throw it all back together at the end, practicing sentences and paragraphs. It's always fun, always a fun challenge, seeing the brains function, thinking where the keys are located. So it's always a good time, and that was an example of that there. And then next one, numeric keypad. You kind of really stick with them on their Chromebooks for typing. They kind of track their work with them. But we like to simulate, you know, if you had a full-range keypad in front of you, what that looks like. And so we practice with the numerical keypad, symbols, all that fun stuff as well. And then we end the main typing unit with our typing tournament, and it's a double elimination bracket. No matter the class size, we kind of conduct it all in one day, but we have the students compete against each other, randomized bracket. Fastest words per minute will advance. If there is a tie, the tiebreaker is accuracy. So always a lot of fun, and we kind of slowly work our way through it till we get to the end, but the students kind of like to show that improvement from where we start at the very beginning to then get that ultimate champion at the end. And then the next slide will kind of show some of the winners from second semester last year. Typically, the winners of the tournament are going to be somewhere between the 40-65-ish words-per-minute range. That's usually where our top students will resign with that. But you have Malia, Claire, Alexia, and then Tyler. So, always a lot of fun. There's candy involved for the winners as well, and then they get certificates for their accomplishments in being the fastest. So after that, then we transition to G Suite, which again encompasses all of Google. And why I like having this be an instruction point is it kind of allows us to meet the students where they are. If they've used any applications to that point, it's Google. And in middle school and into high school, we use Google Classroom. So to me, if we can touch on the Google aspect of things with the Google Apps, then in high school with keyboarding apps, they get Microsoft. So they kind of get best of both worlds at both levels. And G Suite is a good kind of starting point for them to kind of dive in to get a little sampler of those applications with word processing, presentations, and spreadsheets. And so that's kind of why we focus on that. Google Drive, this is kind of example. Google Drive, this is kind of example of some things that we do. Not too long of a unit, we've really just focused on students being able to know how to create folders, organize their files, because some of their Google Drives are, are a mess when we first start. So we try to get that cleaned up. And one of the fun things I like to do on the first day of Google Drive is show them mine. Folder within folder within folder. And I was like, if we didn't have that, it would just kind of be chaos. So it's a good practice point and it kind of helps them in their other courses as well. When they start worksheets, projects, assignments, they can kind of organize that. Gmail, here's just kind of an example of some of the things that we touch on. We do proper, you know, intro salutations, closing salutations, paragraph formatting, signatures. And then we focus on how you can add attachments to emails. Just kind of example of some students work here. We did a practice movie script document we created and then they email me and they try to practice that proper formatting. But it's a lot of good things to see and we know when they have questions, they can email their teachers, me, fellow students, and they have that more professional look to their emails. And then we transition to Google Docs, kind of variety of assignments here. But the main thing is to get that sample with using a word processing application. We experiment with creating lists, different formats, fonts, highlighters. We do things like creating breakfast menus here, just to practice with formatting tables, et cetera. And then I don't know if we can click that link there, but we do have a chocolate chip muffin recipe that will do just different types of documents. Anyways, just different types of word documents to get that practice using that. And then we advance onto spreadsheets. And I think out of all the things we do, super important that we touch on this as soon as we can. And really, I taught high school a few years before this, so this is my first year teaching it to middle schoolers was last year. How quickly they were able to catch on to it though. It was, it was quite fascinating and the main focus points with the Google Sheets unit, using formulas, functions, understanding how we can use the application to help do the math for us. Not feeling like we have to do it all by ourselves. Big practice points for me are just simply one of the big things, entering data into a spreadsheet, how to do that the right way, applying functions, formulas, all of that. One of the fun things we do, create a Christmas list towards the end of the first semester. They write out different gifts that they want for Christmas. They find the prices. They use a sum function to calculate the total at the bottom and just kind of see how they can use it in stuff for themselves, documents for work, projects, et cetera. Google Slides, last thing we end on for the keyboarding apps unit. Really just how they can enhance presentations as they get in the middle school and the high school. You have more projects where you have to present information. So we focus on how we can enhance the look of those presentations. Use, you know, focus on slide, sorry, slide transitions, photos, videos in those presentations, all those sort of things. And then we end that class with actually a presentation as well. And then second course, so business communication. This is another semester course. I'll go ahead and get to the description here. So my biggest thing with this is to simulate students learning about career interests for themselves to prepare them for what's to come with looking for a job, career preparation, what to expect in the workplace, practicing that internal communication with fellow coworkers, staff, and then external communication with customers. So we kind of do a transition from discovering career interests, learning how to interview, getting the job, and then internal and external communication. And emphasis being on using the computer to produce accurate and effective documents, such as how to properly email, letters, memos, reports, resumes, and cover letters are a big thing. Part of that unit or part of that class. And again, several presentations are scattered throughout the course as well. Course overview here, so unit one, career exploration, all about learning what their interests are. Unit two, career portfolio, building up resume, cover letter, creating documents that they can eventually use ideally in real life. They kind of have the template created for them. They can then adapt and modify it to themselves. Interviewing, focusing on what type of questions to expect when you start interviewing for jobs. Inner office communication, again, that more internal communication aspect. And then customer communication, communicating with customers on the outside. Career exploration, just kind of some things that we do here. Surveys are a big thing that we start with and it's as simple as building kitchen cabinets. Or is that ranking something you might want to do one day? Starts there. Developing new medicine, study ways to reduce water pollution. So really figure out what are your interests and passions? And then we try to narrow the focus to what are jobs where you could apply some of those interests? And then we talk about what education requirements would you need to maybe pursue that job one day? Trade school, bachelor's degree, masters? And so we kind of learned about that side of things as well. Career portfolio, here's an example of a resume. And you know, one of the things I tell them is obviously you're not going to have a lot to put on your resume right now, but it's more so creating it, identifying what the proper format is, having a document so that when you can start using it, it's ready to go, you update it as needed. One of the cool projects that we do, I think that link should hopefully take us to it, is a e-portfolio. So we kind of take the resume, but we kind of modernize it, make it a little more virtual. And so this is an example of one of our e-portfolios from eighth grade student last year, Hallie. She's now a freshman. But we can take that resume, things they do well, their soft skills, hard skills, ways to contact. You can scroll up for me. You're fine. So you have the home tab and we really kind of create this personal website for the students. And so click about for me. So then when employers go to look, they can learn the basic soft skills, hard skills about you, learn actually about you, your passions, your interests, sports, hobbies, service skills. So things that you do well, accomplishments in your academic career, strengths that you have, again, hard skills, soft skills. We talked about that. You can go down to resume for me. We link our resumes that we create in class to the website. And then one of the last tabs that we create is just a contact page. So with that, you know, we kind of simulate if an employer were to receive this, they had any questions for you, they could type in their name, email, their message, and then it's actually sent to their student email. So kind of one of the cool projects that we do to wrap up that unit as well. And then we kind of transition. So we started with discovering your interests. We started creating the resume and cover letter, then we simulate the interviewing process. And we really just kind of break down, you know, what to expect, how you prepare for an interview, what are some commonly asked questions? We discuss, we talk about how you answer certain questions. And then we simulate at the end with a mock interview project where I sit down with each student and we go through five, six, seven interviewing questions, simulate that process. I give them feedback on how they answered those questions, what they can maybe improve on. But my big thing with the interviewing part is for them to have a lot of self-evaluation. What did I struggle with? What was I confident in? What could I maybe improve on in the interviewing process? So that's always something fun that we do with that mock interview to give them that experience. Then we transition to inner office communication. So once again, being in the workplace now, right? So now we simulate you have the job, what are some things that you maybe have to know how to do? Big thing, communication. We practice proper emailing format a lot, communicating with your management, fellow coworkers. We do some other tasks too, you know, assuming maybe you're a new intern, creating a company newsletter if the access is there for it. There are some assignments with a company newsletter where they're a new hire at a company of their choice, whether it's Apple, you know, Google. We try to pick bigger companies and you create things like a company newsletter for them. We do things like business requests, that proper lettering and formatting for requesting materials, supplies for a business to simulate that. And then we end and round it off with unit five. So now it's more customer focused, customer oriented. We talk about how you can best deal with customer needs, that direct communication. Here's an example on the right. We do a refund request. So customer had an issue with the product. We had different kind of simulations of XYZ error happened. It was worth X amount of money. Let's practice filling out the form, reaching out to them, coming to a solution to help them. So that's one of the fun things that we do. Next one, we do things like customer quotes. So they want to be, or I guess they want to learn, learn, sorry, more about pricing. We do proper formatting here with addressing what the customer wants, their needs, how we can best satisfy those needs, just to again simulate some of those business documents used in the real world. And then we do end with a project presentation where they present to the class where the customers and what they do is they break down two different products, right? And they kind of show us this one versus this one, strengths, weaknesses of both those products. And then they give kind of their recommendation to us, the customer, of what they think that we should choose. And again, try to work on that public speaking a little bit as well. So that's kind of a summation of both keyboarding and business communication. Any questions? Yes.
Are you finding that students like sixth grade, are they coming to you with more keyboarding skills than they had years ago?
Yes, and I, and I would say what I've learned is just naturally because of how technology is more and more popular, they just have more practice with it. And, and we talked about the keyboard layout and I, guys, it's the same one on your phone. When you can look and, and text without having to look. And so, no, but they have a lot of practice with it and naturally there is more speed than when I first started. And I think it starts just when they're younger, just the exposure to technology.
That's awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the emergency operations plan.
Yes, so just a quick update on the operations plan. We update it every year. It's quite comprehensive. We updated personnel, some figures, roles with transportation coming on. We had to determine, is it the bus barn or is it the transportation depot? There was a divide there. We went with transportation depot, I believe. We also are training on the emergency app and crisis go. Nancy touched on it a little bit. There's a reunification piece that we're currently training everybody on. And we're still making sure that we're working out some of the kinks with that. And then we have our emergency personnel meeting to kind of go over the EOP. We've kind of raked over it with a fine tooth comb as far as what do all the different crisis teams need? And is the wording on this still accurate with what we're doing? And so getting the feedback from emergency personnel, I think will be paramount. And we'll probably come back with more changes next year with, well, they recommended that we look at this. For instance, just some of the responses and they're, they are researched and comprehensive, but you also want to make sure it matches the layout of the building that we currently have, the layout of the building that we will have after construction. And it also reflects emergencies and procedures that are up to date with now versus years before.
Any questions? Yes, just so everyone's aware, a copy of the operations plan is available to the board to review, but it is not available to the public.
It looked like the Go Crisis app is getting more and more familiar to people.
We're getting more and more comfortable with it. And I will say the reps are pretty responsive with us. If we have a question, they're pretty good about getting back to us. We're working through a few things. I think Android phones maybe don't work as well as an iPhone. Some Android users would say, well, it's not the phone. But we're still working through a few things there.
All on your side, so. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the updates to St. Genevieve County R2 school district emergency operations plan for the 2024-25 school year.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have 20, 24, 25 bus routes.
In your packet, you will see a mulatto of highlighted map bus routes as well as more descriptive, specific bus routes. Up to this point, I think we've relied on the maps with the highlights. We are transitioning over to those more descriptive, here's where you're stopping, here's where you're picking up a kid. Obviously, those are going to change on a year to year basis based on the number of students riding that bus, where the stops are. That's quite a tedious transition. And in order to do that, our director has to ride every route to note where certain stops are, where turns are. So you'll see some of those routes have been updated. So that's going to be a year long process until he can get in on all those routes and create those more specific bus route descriptions. We are down to 27 routes. We have a bus driver resign. And we were able to combine one of our routes on two other routes. It seems to be going well. We still are running an AMPM route to Perryville as well as an AMPM. I assume we're storing an AMPM early childhood special education route as well. So those are there for approval.
A motion to approve bus routes for the 2024-25 school year.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Prop SG update.
So on St. Genevieve Middle School Project, we are still awaiting elevator approval from the inspector. It seems like every time we get close, we take two steps backwards. So they are working on a transition area to the nurse's office down at the bottom level. They had to wait on that to finish that spot off. It's just some drywall and somebody in taping and painting at this point. But then we're hopeful that within the next week or two, we will get that inspection in our hand. And Dr. Mercer and Mrs. Sutton will be able to have their winner ride the elevator first.
For Christmas.
Winner at this point. I want to ride.
Early Childhood Center, they're working on drywall. I was able to go out Sunday and take a walk around. It's really, it's quite an impactful view when you are standing in that hallway looking down at those 10 classrooms with the raised ceiling and thinking about the number of kids that are going to be in there and we're going to be able to service. So every time I go out there, I get excited. It looks like a little speck when you're driving on 61, but once you get over there by that building, it's really something. Crews are going to begin, that's not it. Fridge and the cooler are in the cafeteria. Those are looking nice. They're finishing brick, patching some concrete. They started work on the curbs for the road, I noticed as well out there to get those in. And I know they're going to, in the parking area as well, they're going to start putting some curves in. So you're really going to start to see that shape up out there. St. Genevieve Elementary, they're working on foundation. I mean, that's on display out here from all of us. They're working on foundations and slabs, the front entrance, I think they poured, Mrs. Gag, did they pour those steps out there in front?
And the platform.
And the platform as well. South wall scaffolding on it. The crews are going to work on floor drains sometime this week. They hope to pour the floor in the next two weeks and then framing can commence after that. The architects are finishing up plans for the gymnasium floor as well.
That thing's a monster.
Yeah.
And then athletic wrestling facility, just to give you an update, we're still working on a location for that. We think we have a spot picked out, working on some different design elements. I was able to share our last PD day, a design and a location with some of the coaches. And they offered some great suggestions as well that I took back to the architect. So still a work in progress. Hopefully within the next three or four months, we'll nail down a specific location along with the challenges. Because any location that we have has some challenges associated with it. But once we nail down the location, then we can start to nail down the layout of what the wrestling facility is going to look like and then how that's going to transition to athletic park facilities. Any questions on Prop SG?
Thank you. Move on to new business and the first item under the new business tab is assessment plan and updated testing schedule.
Yeah, so for the most part, the assessment plan has stayed the same. I think the biggest piece is the K through three assessment. I don't know how much you know about some of the law with fluency, but NWEA was one of the vendors that were approved. We got word right before school started that it was no longer an unapproved vendor and that was the one that we were using. So we are currently looking at our other options that are approved vendors. There is a waiver period for this year, so we're still good to use it and everybody's familiar with how to use it. So we didn't want to change right before school started. So we are looking at our options for the next year and Dussey wants us to have a commitment by January. So we've met with reps, we've looked at it. And then our next phase is to kind of dig into it ourselves and see which one meets our needs the best. SRSN updates. We are currently getting ready to go live with our data dashboard. I would say it's still a work in progress. So once we go live, we will be updating some information and continuing to add what's necessary there. Some of it is because Some of it is because it's compliance with the federal mandates of you have to have these things. And then other pieces of it, as we continue to update, I imagine will expand because they are more a focus of we want it to reflect our school, our progress, our community. You hear it here every month, but the public doesn't get to see all the great things. So that's kind of the purpose of the dashboard is how can we really tell our story and go beyond just numbers? The other piece of it is they are looking at a continuous improvement framework. And so the next piece of that is to, it's kind of a self review instead of what we go through with the state with the assigned points and all that with our APR. It will, some of it is a reflection piece and it's tied, it's almost kind of like our CSIT process. It's almost tied to, well, we say we're here, we want to get here. What are we doing to move along those lines? And there's several different categories. So the next step is to sit down with principals and say, okay, where do we think we're at as a building and as a district? And then we'll get our next steps through SRSN. But they've been working pretty hard behind the scenes. I think they just got a grant and got approved for more money to provide more PD across the state. So it's continuously moving and updated. And I think there's a meeting for some committee at least once a week going on. So we're, we're trying to stay up with it, but we're also, there's only so many meetings you can go to.
Dr. McPart, that NWEA thing being ineligible, is that going to drive us to look for a different solution across the board or just for independently for those grades or what's the plan?
So we can still use, we're using NWEA map growth independent of any of that. So we're using that just because that's something that our consortium might think originally before even SRSN was around, decided this would be a good reflection of possibility of, of moving beyond map testing and getting a through year assessment. So nothing's off the table if that seems to be something that they're interested in in talking to, just the little amount of talking and asking people, how do you like it? I know at the secondary level, like they think it's a pretty good tool and it reflects where they need to be. The good thing about NWEA is that they offer the science piece as well. You don't get that with some of the other vendors. So I think our contract is good with them on that piece for, for a couple of years. So.
In terms of the SRSN, what are, so assuming we're using our NWEA data to feed into this dashboard?
Correct.
Are all the other schools using NWEA for that or like what?
There's a, there's like three main ones. I think it's NWEA, iReady, and I want to say evaluate is the third one. And there may be like a couple that just are using their own thing and they had to come up with their own system to, to mirror that. At some point, I think it's SRSN's dreaming goal to come up with criteria for through year assessment that would replace the map and say, we want this and put it out to vendors. And it could be NWEA, iReady, or whoever, that it's a RFP process and they're hoping that like we'll be a big enough consortium for them to build that assessment. Their goal is how can we get information that teachers can act on in real time and also not test students until they're blue in the face? So how can we get the minimum number of questions that's still statistically valid?
So, so you said the NWEA, which I'm familiar with, so it's not, it's not approved this year?
So, yeah, NWA fluency. The one that we're used to is map growth, which is like the three times a year. This one's for the literacy bill where they have, they have to read, students have to put on headphones and read into the computer. So I don't know how many teachers are going to be upset as far as like the actual test. I think it's more of like having to change another thing.
Right, now we have to learn the whole.
Yeah, yeah.
So when we say NWEA for those folks, the K through, you said three, it was two different like programs owned by the same?
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah. And, and there is like a phase in for fourth and fifth, like when we have new students from fourth and fifth, we have to test them. And if they're on a reading success plan, we even have to continue to test them until they, they test out. So theoretically, it could happen until the end of high school. So right now it's just limited to, to elementary.
I'm going to hijack. Oh, go ahead, Jerry.
No, and specifically the fluency.
Correct, yeah. And in the different components within fluency. So it will be like bonnets, pandemic awareness. There is a comprehension piece in that as well, but oral reading fluency is a big component of it too.
Sure.
And DUCI put out those requirements, right? Or do we test them for fluency?
Correct, and, and this is just me speculating. I think the reason NWA didn't make the cut was I think they maybe promised that they would make some changes to, to meet the requirements for DUCI and DUCI said, okay. And I think maybe they just weren't able to provide them with what they needed.
And to hijack the conversation, so the SRSN, can you give me just a refresher course? So we're, how many years into? We have a couple more years with the waiver?
With the waiver, I'd have to get back to you. I don't know if I, it's a three year waiver and I think we just got it last year, I believe. Yeah, last year, but I don't know, I need to clarify if, if the waiver actually starts this year. So like is this year one of the waiver? But it's a three year waiver.
If we have the waiver, does that mean we're still taking the map test this year?
Yes, we're still taking.
What is the waiver actually waiving for us?
It's waiving the APR reporting. Yeah, yeah. And so we're still taking the map test. That is a federal waiver. They actually put in for that waiver and they got a little bit of feedback. So I think they're adjusting a few things and I think they're going to put in again for that.
So thinking the federal waiver, then we could use conceivably NWEA for?
Then they could put the RFP out for bid and say, these are the things we're looking for, we're looking for maybe little testlets. I will say this, DUCI is aware of the work and in conversations, whether it's in like a IMSIP committee or other committees, I've heard DUCI, it's almost like they're running a, a system on the side here too, trying to come up with something. Because I've heard the assessment office talking about little testlets and I think they're trying to do it in math. And I think they're even starting to maybe look at piloting in schools to see if they can get feedback on it. So I think we're in the right direction. I think it's going to happen one way or the other.
So the federal will be just for those that are part of SRSN or for the entire state?
For those that are in SRSN. And now there's a, there's a second group.
They're just getting in or?
Cohort, yeah. So now they're applying for their waiver and then they'll, they'll come on with a federal waiver too. Yep.
All of this with the goal of replacing MAP.
Correct.
A testing system that would give more timely feedback.
Yeah, and I think that second part's the, the big part that we need to highlight. It's not that we don't want to be accountable and see where our students are. We want something that if we're going to spend the time testing students, something that we can use to inform our instruction and build on top of, of what we're doing and something that reflects what we're teaching and where we're at. Sometimes you're limited by the test format, you know? You can only do so many recall questions or, you know, multiple choice. So the more we can make it applicable in real world, I think is also a big piece of it.
And it's competency, competency rates, correct? NWEA?
Yeah, so I, I think one of the goals will be, like the map growth that we're currently using, it's based on where the student's at. So like if you get two wrong, it may move you down a level to see, okay, do you still have that? If you get a couple right in that domain, it may move you up to kind of see where you're at. So it, it doesn't cap out at, I'm just testing you at a fourth grade level because you're a fourth grader.
Personally, I had to, I had to laugh because my son scored perfect on listening and I was like, hmm, interesting. Interesting, how does that happen? That was Luke.
Thank you, Dr. McPart.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the assessment plan and updated testing schedule for the 2024, 2025 school year.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the calendar adjustment.
So I think this is an artifact left over from the transition from counting schools as having days in attendance to hours of attendance. Often, I think our legislators are very confused because if you'll notice in Senate Bill 727, they go back to using the school days terminology. And so that, how to translate that into our world and what that looks like is tough. When legislators mandate that we transition from a day calendar to an hour calendar, now we're required to do 1,044 hours. But let's introduce a new bill that can go back to talking about this. So that's tremendously frustrating for school officials to try to navigate. That being said, this is an artifact left over from that initial transition away from the days thinking to an hours. DUCI has updated some of their core data input screens that calculates the required hours. So what we noticed this year with that update on the screen was that with our five weather makeup days, we were not meeting the 36 hour weather makeup requirement. So just, just to review, we're required to do 1,044 hours of people attendance. 36 of those hours have to be implement weather makeup days identified on your calendar. And then you have a 60 hour total maximum makeup requirement. So anything over the 36 weather implement days that you have to make up, it then goes to make up an hour, you forgive an hour, you make up an hour, you have a day now. So there's that half forgiveness. So you get to a total of 60 that you don't have to make up. So if you go to the next slide, I have blown up there the bottom right hand corner of our calendar to show you that our five days, which are represented in gray on our calendar, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 27th, and 28th of May, those are six and a half hour days. And so that gets us to a total of 32 and a half weather makeup hours built into our calendar. So for, I was talking to Ashley McMillan Superintendent at Park Hills today, they have a 6.75 hour day. And so they get a little closer to that 36 hour requirement. So when we put all of our days in attendance in, where our professional development days are, off for Christmas break, off for Thanksgiving, we're off for spring break, put all that into the DUCI screen and then it calculates our weather makeup days for us and it showed 32 and a half hours. So we are not meeting the requirement. So my proposal this evening to meet the requirement, we're going to talk about repercussions in a second, is the next screen where we take the 29th and we add a half day there. That half day of four and a half hours, you look on the right, the math gets us to 37 hours, implement weather makeup meets the requirement and we should be okay. So how would we get there? How would we get to the 29th of May? We would have to have, think about our calendar and our snow days. We have two traditional snow days, so you have to have two snow days. We then have to have five more implement weather days, which would be all made up by AMI. Then we would have to have an additional three snow days, which would be made up in our calendar and that would take us to the 28th. Then we would have to have another snow day, which would get us to the 29th. So that's a total of 11. Now, looking back over our history over the past several years, we haven't reached that milestone, but I do remember a couple of years ago where we, we were supposed to come back from Christmas break and we were off for another week. So it's, it's in the scope of possibility. My hope is that we would not get to the 29th and have to talk about, because then it's not just making up a half day on the 29th, that would be a full weather day. So then we're going to have to adjust and talk about that, how many more do, are we getting 12 or 13? And then we only have to make up one hour for every two hours weather. So the proposal to fix our calendar so that we're meeting the statute requirement of the 36 hour weather makeup is to include that 29th as a half day in our calendar. And then everything else shifts over a day. Everything in blue is employee makeup PD days. All of those shift over a day and it all ends on the 6th, the last possible teacher makeup PD day. It's a lot. Lori Myeroff was not very happy as, as that screen kept showing an error and saying, what are we doing wrong? What are we, and, and this is the process that we follow for the past several years. Like I said, that artifact left over from the transition to days, DUCI figured out, well, we're going to add this screen and so it's going to auto calculate for us. So we assure all districts are getting that 36 hour weather.
For the children.
Children.
For students.
Yes.
That's if we had 11 days of snow days.
And that's with graduation holiday too. And seven, not eight.
Are there any other questions? It's frustrating. I spent an inordinate amount of time on this calendar attempting to do it the same way we've been doing it. And then to find out all of a sudden, we have a screen that they, and now we have to change the way we've done our calendar. So this does get us to that requirement.
Any other questions?
I know.
I think, yeah, this keeps us compliant. Well, this would make us compliant. Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, this would keep us compliant with state statute and allow us to continually receive state grants, yes.
What's that? In 1990?
It was in June, I'll tell you that.
Setting. I'll be at a wedding.
I'll make a motion to amend our board approved calendar to include additional half day of weather makeup to remain in compliance with DUCI's 36 hour implement weather makeup requirement.
I'll second, oh.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Any personnel changes approved during closed session this evening will be provided in the draft meeting minutes within 72 hours of adjournment. I just need a motion to return to.
Okay, I'm, I make a motion to adjourn, to return, we're going to return. Oh, sorry, hit the wrong one. Okay. I make a motion that the Board of Education resume a closed meeting and a closed, with a closed record and a closed vote for purposes listed in the revised Missouri Statute, Section 610.021. Okay. I think Martha, that was a Martha. Okay. Yeah, all right.
Go ahead.
Okay. Does it matter?
Nope.
I think so. Okay, just checking. Jamie Valu.
Yes.
Eric Bosler. David Bova.
Yes.
Jerry Diesel, yes. Josh Gettinger.
Yes.
James Kirchner. Martha Reesinger. Right, 7-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.